September 29th, City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and at home. We have two good items for discussion today. The first one is a work session on the Triple Bottom Line Framework. And that's something we've been working on for a long time and trying to put to some good use in the city. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just have Kelly come on up and she's going to bring up a variety of folks, so I'm going to kind of back off so they have enough room up here. And I'll let you introduce and take it away.
Thanks a lot for allowing us to take some time on your agenda to bring you up to date on where we are with the Triple Bottom Line Framework and Triple Bottom Line Tool. I'm joined right now by Terry Monroe from the City Manager's Office, and we have staff from other departments who will join us in just a few minutes. Triple Bottom Line, or TBL, we use that phrase a lot. It takes a broad view and integrates multiple considerations. The Triple Bottom Line takes into account economic and fiscal considerations, environmental health, and social equity and human rights. And our intention is that the Triple Bottom Line not be a slogan, but actually a way of how expanding how we look at issues and analyze decisions and actions. And the overarching goal is to improve the way we do our work. So that's really what it's about. Because it takes a broad view, several staff members are going to help with today's presentation. So Terry is going to take a few minutes to walk through an online, interactive Triple Bottom Line tool that aids our analysis and will provide you additional background, how we got to where we are. And then I just want to introduce staff who will join us when Terry is done with her part of the presentation. Because the application of the Triple Bottom Line Framework really is broad and integrated, we invited staff from departments who are using this framework. And these are Craig Smith, who's the Recreation Division Manager; Kevin Finney, Parks Maintenance Manager from Parks and Open Space; Lydia McKinney, a Planner and Metropolitan and Community Planner, planning; and then Lavina Norberg, our Customer Experience Manager from the Eugene Library; and Bebo Sylle, our Sustainability Liaison, also will join us. You've seen TBL information in some of your recent Agenda Item summaries. And Ethan Nelson from Planning and Development will follow us with a work session on food security, and you'll see some summary of Triple Bottom Line information in that Agenda Item summary as well. And so this work session provides an opportunity to highlight application of the Triple Bottom Line Framework, an update on the tool itself. And then it's our chance to hear from you, feedback about how you would like to see Triple Bottom Line information coming to you to help you with your deliberations and decisions. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about the development of the online tool, how we got to where we are now, what it is, and, almost as important, what it isn't.[189.12][189.12](Laughter). I knew it was in there somewhere.
Flow.
How it works. So I'll take you through, it won't be an exhaustive tutorial, but just a quick look at how it works, preview a coming attraction, and then give you a chance to hear some real world stories about how we're using it. So, to start off with, we had hoped originally, when we set out to use a Triple Bottom Line tool, that we could just go out and find a ready-made one that some other city was doing. And we looked pretty exhaustively. And what we found wasn't really adequate to meet our needs. The few things that were out there were either these very dense policy documents that really weren't something that was going to help you do your work. It was more a lot of theoretical stuff behind it, or else really very simple, bare-bones grids that weren't going to give people the information. So you'd still have to, every time you did this, have every kind of expertise necessary in the room. So what we were trying to do is find something that would give people the support to develop and grow expertise in all three elements of the Triple Bottom Line. So we ended up having to develop our own. We used staff resources and outside expertise. And we were able to involve members of various commissions. So we had Human Rights Commission help, and we had definitely lots of help from the Sustainability Commission, who've, they've been a real engine behind this. And we pilot-tested a prototype with a few projects, and then used that feedback to divide development of the ongoing tool. And I was talking about really needing to clarify what it does and what it doesn't do. We've talked about it in various ways, and I hear various ways of characterizing it. Decision-making tool is one of them. And I really want to be clear that what I'm showing you isn't a decision-making tool. I wish there was an app that would make all of our hard decisions for us. But this is really a thinking tool. It helps supplement the real decision-making tool, which is the human brain, the human conscience, the experience. And so it's designed to surface information that we otherwise wouldn't have to help us make our decisions, and to help you make your decisions. So it's often, when you're embarking on a project, you're really pretty clear on what the effects are in maybe one or two dimensions of the Triple Bottom Line, but there might be another one where it's just not part of your normal arena, and you're not even thinking of those things. And so this tool is supposed to help us be well-versed in the context of each thing we're working on, in all three of those elements. So, and to give us clarity about the nature of any trade-offs that we might be making in doing something, and if we're using it early enough, this, I think, is the best and highest use of it. If we're using it early enough, forecasting some things that could be issues and looking for ways to mitigate some of those as we go forward, or at least be very clear and transparent about what those possible effects of our decisions are. So I'm going to show you how the tool, just a quick look at it. The power of it, it's divided into the three elements: social equity, environmental health, and economic prosperity. And for each one, there are a series of, and you're not expected to read these, you have that in the packet. And when you first look at it, it can be overwhelming, and so I'm going to explain why that shouldn't be. Those are prompts. They're not questions that you exhaustively answer for every project you're working on. They're prompts, thinking prompts, that make you ask yourself questions about how does this affect the neighborhoods? How might this proposal affect people of lower income? How might it do? And so it's to get you thinking. And then, when you're using it, you make notes next to each of those topic areas about things that do seem relevant to that project. And you're thinking, and you're pausing, and you're discussing. And this, and as people who are going to be presenting later will tell you, this is one of multiple tools that we use. This is the online, everything-in-one-place tool. But it encompasses the most comprehensive view of the framework. You're using this to think and get out your best thoughts. And then down at the bottom, you're summarizing what the major social equity effects are. And you're giving a quick assessment of, overall, what you think the effect of this project on social equity is. So then you go to the next one, and it's the same series of prompts in different topic areas for environmental health. You go through it, and then you pull out the most important and relevant effects and put it in the summary. And this next one will look alarmingly like that. And you do the same thing for economic prosperity. So by the time you've done this, you've really had a lot of really rich thinking, usually a lot of discussion with others about those effects. And so, in each of those three areas. And then it's time to really pull it together and start to look at the overall balance of the particular project.
Terry, let me interrupt you just for a second. You referred to something in the packet, and I just want to point out, starting on page 137, Attachment B in your packet is a printed version that takes the prompts that Terry's talking about and puts it in a printed version. So if you want to see what those kinds of questions are, and it's hard to read from here, you can certainly look at Attachment B, and that can help supplement what Terry's sharing with you.
So when you get to the stage where you're really trying to stand back a little bit and look at how it's affecting all three of those areas, you're given, one thing that's really nice about the tool is you can have your summary text, and that's not supposed to be intelligible, in front of you, and it will help you write the overall summary and keep those things in mind, so you're not losing track of the thinking that you were doing along the way. And then you submit it, and it gives you a nice neat little summary, a very visual just sense of those balances. And then from that, this becomes a very useful little piece of information. And one of the ways that you might see this is in your Agenda Item summaries, you've started to see Triple Bottom Line Analysis information in some of yours, and you'll be seeing more and more. And this is how it could look. And so, that's a quick view of the tool. You'll have opportunity, as time goes by, to get more depth, because we're going to have an external-facing tool that we'll be able to use with our boards and commissions. You will be able to use it. People who are doing the city's business, it'll be a mirror version of the one that we're using internally. And with that, there'll be an embedded tutorial that will make it really easy to use and to navigate it and everything. So you'll get to play with it hands-on more, I think, in the next month or so. We're working out a final detail that will make it easier or more difficult for people to collaborate. So we want to wait to release it until that's worked out. So now, we want to show you the really living, breathing, true strength of the Triple Bottom Line. And that's how staff are already using it to produce better results for Eugene, and how we will be seeing that more and more as we become well-versed in it. So. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Craig Smith, and I'm a Triple Bottom Line user.[752.23][752.23](Laughter).
It's like Craig S.
Well, Craig.
Say, "Well, Craig."
So Recreation has had a variety, has had a variety of applications of use in Triple Bottom Line in the last year. The one I'd like to talk about today or use as an example is the, about a year ago, during the FY11 Budget Challenge, when Renee, the Executive Director of LRC, asked, she came to Recreation and said, "Give us a million dollars. Give us a million dollars in cuts or revenue increases." So the Recreation staff went out of their service areas and came up with strategies, all kinds of strategies, to find the best way to go into FY11 and balance our budget. I took those strategies, and I essentially laid the Triple Bottom Line tool over them, went back to meet with Renee and John, and talked about essentially what the impact of that million dollars would be. So an example that would be in the Triple Bottom Line is, let's say, it's easy to look at pools. Let's say we close pools for a couple months, or a month, reduce programming. Well, there's definitely going to be an environmental gain from that, because we're going to reduce energy and reduce our carbon footprint. There's going to be an economic gain from that, because we reduce programming, we're not operating. But there's also an impact to the program. So that would be the three elements of Triple Bottom Line mixed in with that. With the budget specifically, another example would be if you're cutting programs, and the programs you're not going to cut are those that create the most revenue for you. Those are the high-cost recovery. So when you start to look at cuts, you look at, oh, so you're going to have to cut the ones that have the least cost recovery, or those that are free or reduced to the public. So when you start to make cuts, then the folks you're impacting would probably be the most vulnerable. And they would be those on fixed income, like seniors or disabled, or those youth and families that have low income. So now you're talking about a great economic input, but what's the impact on social equity or accessibility to our services? So the tool allowed us to have that discussion. The feedback I got back from Renee, John, and Kristy was, "All right, so we have this impact. Now I want you to really fine-tune it, or find a sweet spot where you can start to make some of those economic decisions with the least impact on social equity." And that's what we did, and came back with.
Okay.
Well, I'm Kevin Finney, Park Operations Manager, Parks and Open Space. And I participated in an application of the Triple Bottom Line tool with a group of Parks and Open Space managers. And what we looked at was the impact of the park operations gap, sort of going forward. What happens if we, don't plug the gap? And the kinds of things that we learned, and I think Terry talked about this a moment ago, we learned that there's a lot of benefit for us as a group of managers to think very differently. We recognize that we tend to, we have a lot of strength on the environmental side. We tend to think of issues as green issues typically. That's our natural strength. But we recognize from, through the application of the tool, that when we look at social equity issues, and also when we consider broader economic impacts, we actually have a much better kind of decision process. The other thing I would share with you is that we recognize that we, and I think most discussions tend to be this way, we tend to look at sort of park-positive outcomes. And we thought that there are actually sort of upsides to the downside, that not filling the gap, that there are benefits, there could be benefits to the community. There are other things that the money gets used for. So part of our investigation and our learning was, the tool helped us, or the framework helped us to have that conversation as a group of managers, and kind of consider what would be some of the positive outcomes of a change that we don't really want to look at. We don't, you know, we struggle to consider on the positive side. So that's kind of our takeaway learnings.
I'm Lydia McKinney with Eugene Planning Division. And we applied the Triple Bottom Line tool to Walnut Station Mixed Use Center, which I was recently, before you, talking about. And the time at which we, we did this in February of this year, and as you know, the Walnut Station Mixed Use Center project was going on for, at that point, was about four years. So the application of the tool was towards the end of the project process. And what we found was, and we used something very similar to, I think, what Craig was talking about, where we brought some folks together in the room. We had folks from Equity and Human Rights. We had folks from Community Development. We had Matt McCray, who was working on the Climate and Energy Action Plan, to talk about the different Triple Bottom Line tool components. And had a relatively quick conversation that generated, again, a lot of rich information. And as Kevin pointed out, we tend to, I think, in planning, really hit the environmental piece quite well, but the social equity and the economic piece often don't get as much attention. And so for me, hearing from those different perspectives, I mean, we definitely learned things that we hadn't considered when we started the process. Obviously, at that point, we couldn't change what we were doing. A lot of decisions had been made. We've done, obviously, lots of public process. But it did give us information that we could use, for instance, in the implementation of the project. So, for instance, one of the areas that we saw that might be a gap would be in some of the social equity pieces, which then gives us some information about what we want to look at with implementation. So affordable housing is one of the things that we're trying to combine, obviously, with the development on the transit corridor. The other thing that I would note about this is that, how I understood it, and one of the takeaways that I got from this, is that going through the process, learning from the other staff who were in the room with us, gave me some additional capacity to understand how the tool is being used. And then I was actually asked to help review of the Triple Bottom Line tool when the neighborhoods were using that to inform their grants discussion. So that's the little piece of information I have for you.
And hello, I'm Lavina, the Customer Experience Manager at the library. And one of the applications we used for it was this spring, when we were considering changing the receipt paper in the receipts that, when people receive when they check out books, or the hold notices. And we were trying to decide if it would be worth changing to BPA-free paper. It's a decision we had considered in the past. We wanted to look at it again. And as Terry mentioned, those prompts, we found, gave us some very different questions to ask, additional information to research, that we probably wouldn't have done without those prompts. And it really helped us look at all of the impacts, because for many times, it was just looking at which is cheaper, what should we do? And what we were able to do, because of the good things it had us consider, was we looked at some of the back ends of how we were buying the paper. And maybe some of our processes and our procedures could be changed, which then balanced everything out. And it came to the result that it was minimal financial impact, because we considered additional information. The, I'm sorry, minimal financial impact, neutral environmental impact, because currently neither paper is recyclable. But the social equity was huge at the opportunity to remove any potential health risks. So it then ended up, because we had those three different focuses to look at at once, made the decision really easy for the group of managers to make. And what was an additional fun element of it was, when I wrote the press release telling people that we're now using BPA-free paper, I celebrated the approach we took in making this decision, that this was, these were the things we considered, and it helped us come to this decision. And when that press release was picked up from media around the Northwest and around the country, and it was really fun to celebrate, I work for an organization, that this is our way of doing business. These are the things we consider when we're making decisions. And I was particularly proud of that. And the library now uses it for informal and formal thought presses and things we're looking at and considering. Our way of doing business.
So that closes our presentation, and we can pull Terry back up here, if you want, to talk about the tool and the status of that. And we can do our best to answer questions, or just listen.
I just appreciate hearing all those, how you used it. I guess when we first thought about wanting to use a Triple Bottom Line tool, we had kind of a very, as I think we all did, kind of a very loose notion of what that might be. And you've really taken it to a very useful tool, and really appreciate that. I like the prompt idea, too, and that ability to be able to think things through. It doesn't have the rigidity of you have to answer X, Y, and Z, and gives you room to think about things differently. And I think the state is going to be looking at true costs of things, and you're going to be needing for grants and other purposes to really understand the true cost of things, which are the, actually, all three of these things. So I think that's what they're going to be looking for, and that will be, this will be helpful with grant applications and things of that sort, I think. Yes?
Well, thank you all for all the work you've done. This is pretty amazing, really, this is. I mean, I think about it in my, where I work, and I think about how this kind of thought process is not really thought of, you know, as an industry standard for anything. And so I think that we have something to celebrate, definitely. I think the commitment that you've all shown in using it, and the willingness, you know, to uniformly look at these things is amazing, you know? So I just appreciate all the work you've done, and I look forward to using the tool myself if I come upon a situation where I have to make a decision that isn't in the AIS. So, thank you.
I think one of the things they were going to be asking you to think about, George, you're next, and Alan, is how you'd like to receive this kind of information, so you know what's going on and what would be helpful. And I guess I would just add to that, that the fear always, when we get a thing on our AIS that says, "Here are the goals this applies to," your fear is always that you're looking for a way to explain or give credence to what you're doing, as opposed to the other way around. And so I think from my perspective, it's how to really make clear that we're trying to use this as a way to do a better job, and not as a way to explain whatever we were going to do in the first place. So that's the big shift, as far as I'm concerned. George, Pauline?
Well, I just have a couple of questions. One is, I take it this is an ongoing educational piece of work, as far as our staff is concerned, and we haven't really reached the end of the learning phase. Just how applicable will this be in the private sector, this Triple Bottom Line? The actual theory, not our tool? And that was going to be my follow-up question.
Well, I'll provide you my answer, and others could chime in. But Triple Bottom Line is a concept and framework that's been used for a long time in the private sector, but it sometimes has different meanings in its use and measure success. And it's often starting from the economic standpoint, but then looking at not only shareholders, but stakeholders as well, and what impacts are for stakeholders. So it definitely is at play in the private sector. One of the things that we've also heard is, we've developed this, Terry referenced how the tool would be available to people who are doing the city's work, but we could anticipate that over time, more people in the local private sector may see ways that they can apply these same concepts if they're not already doing so. Or if they are doing so, maybe some of these kinds of questions and discussions will help them in the kinds of actions and decisions that are taken in the private sector. And so there may be opportunities for us to do some partnering with the Chamber and others, just to share the concepts and enrich the discussion.
And that was something else, that I think this is a good opportunity to reach out to the private sector, to form those public-private partnerships, to try to obtain the goals that we're seeking throughout the entire community, and not just within our organization. I just hope that the copywriting doesn't cause any problems as far as being able to expand the use of the tool that we've developed throughout our entire community.
Okay. Okay, Alan?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, George. Triple Bottom Line, natural steps, sustainability filters are used quite often in the private sector. I was just reading an article about United Technologies Corporation, Fortune 50 company, carrier, Otis elevators, Pratt &amp; Young engines. And they have a similar process for their thinking about it, and use it, and have done some really amazing things. But I think this is a great tool, great examples. And I know many, many people worked on this over the long term. I think what it does is it leads us to better decisions. It's really what it amounts to. A more rounded look, a more rounded thinking about everything that we do, in cases where we wouldn't necessarily think about all three of the different areas: environment, economics, and social equity. And having been on the Sustainability Commission, I looked at a whole bunch of these different models. And when we were starting to look at this stuff last year, was it last year? It was probably a year before that. Time flies when you're having fun, huh? And some of them were either, you know, too short, not good enough, and some of them were way too complicated. And I think this one actually strikes a pretty good balance. It's not overly complicated, but it's not overly simplistic, but it's usable. And we've tested it, and people who've used it said it really works. And I think this is actually, after what I've seen, one of the best tools around, period. I think it's actually world-class, which is why we copyrighted it, I think, not to limit its use, but to protect it from getting perverted in different ways, or having people abuse it. But also to maintain its integrity, which is really what that's all about. As far as how I would like to see this used, I think the example we have is on our Next Agenda item, which is the future security one, where we actually had the Triple Bottom Line impacts in our AIS, where it just briefly went through, and I guess these are probably the summary statements that went through each of the different ones. I thought that was very valuable for me as a decision-maker, to be able to see that kind of thinking encapsulated in a summary form. I don't necessarily want to see the entire thing, but I like the fact that people do that process and end up with these summaries for us to look at, because it assures me that that thinking has occurred, but it also helps me in doing my assessment of my own Triple Bottom Line.
Other comments from any of you?
I'd like to see that, actually, on a regular basis, be in our EIS, almost all of them.
George Brown?
Yeah, I think that this is a good supplement to the standard, traditional, objective analytical tools that we already use. I don't think that it's particularly revolutionary, because you can look at any project, and there's 51 questions. And depending on the project, half or more won't even apply to what's, to help you make your decision. It's like, no, it's not relevant to the project in hand. But I think it's a very useful checklist to remind us of things that we might have forgotten. You know, and then... It's like they're not relevant to the project in hand. But I think it's a very useful checklist to remind us of things that we might have forgotten, you know, and then, you know, avoid blowback later, unintended consequences, like, oh, this was such a great decision. And then you find out a year later, oh, no, we forgot this one thing that, you know, was so detrimental to the outcome of the whole project. So I think it's very good. I just have, I was at a corridor, West 11th Corridor meeting yesterday and a couple of members from the sustainability and a couple from planning and they're, I guess, going to use this to analyze the different options for West 11th. Is that correct? Am I, did I hear them right?
Yes, and when the Sustainability Commission was here presenting their annual report and work plan, there was, they checked in with you about forming a joint committee of the Planning Commission and the Sustainability Commission. And so they're going to use the triple bottom line framework to look at the West Eugene MX so that they can provide some additional commentary on that process. So they wanted to, they wanted to get their hands in on the tool as well.
Well, that's the one I'm skeptical about because I, I've looked this over and I've looked over the routes and the no-build option and the, and I just don't see how that could possibly be affect, be useful and determining. But I'd be happy to, I do want to see how they do it and look at the outcome and maybe I will be proven wrong, but I'm, I'm just think that this is one, this is one case in particular where I think this is more standard analysis is, is going to merit, you know, better data that we can use in our decision. But yes, I think it's a useful, a very useful checklist because it's, it's easy to forget one or two elements in any project. So anything that can help us remember all that is good. Thank you.
I actually think, I don't think this takes the place of an analytical tool. It's a very, it's an additional tool to use, but the big difference to me is I can't think of anything that we do that doesn't have these three elements. I can't think of anything that doesn't have some economic impact or some social impact or some environmental impact, no matter what it is. I can't think of where that would ever, ever be the case. And I do know that historically here and in, all across this country, people look at certain things and say, oh, that's a human rights thing, so that's a social equity thing. And they wouldn't look at the other two elements and conversely, things that seem more economic or more environmental, they wouldn't look at it from the social equity. So this is really trying to call us to putting all those pieces into our thinking all the time, which is what we have established in our goals, is what we want to, want to be doing. So it is, I really do think it's adding a whole nother layer of thinking that helps us become a more sustainable community in that sense. And so I really, I really appreciate that a lot. And I think it's really important work and I do think, I'm hoping that we will be finding ways to share this with some of the national organizations that we're connected with too because I think they're going to be very, very interested in this work. People are struggling with this issue, especially the social equity piece, all over the country. They're struggling with trying to figure out how to do this. So I think it's a, it's a big deal and I think you could come at it from any of your organizations and professional organizations and all of the places we work. Yes, Kelly?
Yeah, I just presented yesterday to the statewide Oregon Recreation and Park Association at their conference and triple bottom line framework to the group of folks who are parks and recreation professionals. And nobody else had really gone this route in some of their decision-making processes and certainly hope to take the same presentation for the national convention here.
Were they interested?
They were, they were, they were. And the twist is, is where you start to go when you think so broad. It just opens up the opportunity to think of things that you maybe haven't thought about before and that's good, which then essentially leads to a better discussion. And then when you get down to it, when you have to make a decision, it just defines, whether good or bad, right or wrong, disagree or agree, the impacts are out there. And it's more clearly defined. So it's not necessarily, I think, for new, for people just jumping into it, a new concept to do. The example was, well, you need to do it. You need to use it to see if it applies. You need to just take it and use it. The last 25 minutes of that session, I just said, let's evaluate simply this conference. Evaluate this conference. And we just had a discussion based on that and brought up questions about, you know, what, social equity at this conference, what does that mean? What type of questions you need to ask and economic impact and things like that. So it was, it was good.
Good, thank you. Betty, did you ever hand it?
Halfway.
I think I'm supposed to see those.
I wonder if this is going to be used the same way as our growth management policy. We, I think, are pretty much ignored. One time we decided we would have, everything would be looked at in light of our growth management policies. And having, so that's something to think about. But I tend to be a little skeptical of any formulas. Look at this and this and this and as, it's easy to fit anything into a formula, as Kitty intimated earlier, that sometimes that happens. But I hope, when you're talking about social equity, sometimes people say some environmental thing is interfering with social equity. I wonder if you're thinking of the long-term social equity, not just right now. That's, there are some things that are good for people 100 years from now that maybe look as if they're hurting someone right now. And so it's a, it's, I, sometimes I think it can restrict your thinking when you're thinking one, two, three, like, does it fit this, this, this? And then I have a couple of questions about, in the library, when they decided to charge a fee for re-shelving books that people have reserved and don't pick up, did anyone talk about social equity? That's harder on poor people than it is on well-off people, obviously. And then another one, when you close the Amazon pool for swim meets, how you bring in money from other places, I know, and people who have paid for the pool, who are paying for it with their taxes, aren't able to use it, sometimes on the hottest weekends of the month. People who get off work at five o'clock aren't able to use it if it's closed at five. And I think those are social equity things, all of those. And I just wonder if you, if those things are being considered all the time.
And they are definitely. In the library, access to our services to as many of our community members as we can is an extremely high priority and goal for us and it is something we need to balance often with operations. And it was something that was considered when we made that decision.
Considered and rejected.
In the balance of all, it was that we felt we needed to make the best decision so that we could maintain the most access to as many services as possible.
Alan?
I think that this tool will actually get a lot of play around the country because it's so well-done and there are not very many tools like this. So I think necessarily it will start to get some national attention and rightfully so. Question I have for kind of panelists, folks, people who've used it, the part that's the trickiest on this and the one that we have the most difficulty with is the social equity stuff. Often it's easy to do the analysis on the environmental impacts and the economic impacts, but the social equity part is kind of difficult. I was wondering what your guys, having used it, what you learned, what you thought was difficult about that part or lessons learned about it?
I think, yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. That is the piece that's, that we all struggle with a lot, I think, Alan. I think the value, that there's been value in the conversations in that they have, even though none of us at the table, we're having a conversation where no one at the table feels that they're an expert on social equity issues, if we strike, if we're successful in bringing different viewpoints to the table, we can actually expand the way we're thinking about it. For example, on the park side, when we talk about some issues, we realize, we have to recognize, for example, lighting issues have a, have a very disparate impact on people that use the park at night that are, have different access to or different levels of vulnerability and to crime, for example. So women and children, whether you light a park or not, has a disparate impact on women and children. So I think the conversations, while they may not be perfect, they're much, much richer and getting better, sort of just expanding and constantly expanding. The other thing, I think there's a real capacity piece here that as we have more of the conversations and we share them with one another, we are sort of, don't forget the women and children, don't forget the impacts on people of particular socioeconomic status and so forth. So I think we're actually building a lot of capacity through the application of the tool.
May I ask?
I would just second that in terms of, for me anyway, going through that process and having actually Raquel Wells was there talking about the social equity piece and just, you know, thinking about things and I don't think you necessarily have to have an expert, but different people in a room will look at things differently and just, maybe it's starting to have that conversation and learning more about how to be able to apply that. But again, that was something that we recognized was something we hadn't thought about as much as we had the other two pieces. And so making sure that we, you know, focus on that, like I said, on implementation and also make sure that we take that in on the front end when we begin any new planning process.
Because there's like 25 or so questions on social equity that prompt you to think about that kind of stuff that you might not.
I think, I think the key is practice, practice, practice for us.
Also how you get to Carnegie Hall.
And depending upon the situation, what you're considering, some of those questions may or may not be as obviously relevant, but it still gets you thinking about and considering things in a different way than you would have. And that's the training, the brain and to really look at this framework and look at things from all three aspects.
Totally agree. I think it's a torch for social equity. If that's our least understanding of the three components, then it's going to elevate that up to a higher level just through discussion. I think it's educational discussions, some hard discussions, which that should include.
I guess my final question relates to how this gets integrated and whether or not it ends up just being another fat thing that we do for a while and then, and then kind of fades away, or is this something that's going to be integrated into the way that we think about decision-making and consider?
We'll see, but there are some steps we're taking to be intentional about integrating it. And so part of that is having this discussion with you to find ways we can show, show it in your agenda item summary so that it starts to become the norm. What we're also doing internally is we've had a number of roundtable discussions with staff from across departments. We're planning a stretch leadership opportunity that'll be taking place after the first year over several months where we're pulling people again from across departments to have these conversations with one another so that they can become mentors who take it into departments. And then we've been visiting with department management teams to talk about how it can be applied within departments. So in that sense, we're promoting that engagement and getting folks to embrace it. And so I think that will really help with integration.
Yeah, I think having it in the AIS is one way to do another, I guess the proof of its usefulness is that you keep using it.
Andrea?
Well, this conversation just got me thinking about a lot of issues around social equity that I have tried to not address, so it really doesn't pertain to this group. My, you know, there's a lot of questions about, you know, the affected communities and I just hope that within this, that there is thought that not only talking about how it affects them, but actually asking them, you know, bringing them to the table and making sure that they're a part of the conversation. Disabilities has Lila, I mean, they're a perfect group. So, and then, this isn't the right venue, but that never stops me. So within the own community organism, within our own, within the equity diversity community that we're, that's been working on, you know, some, I'm assuming that they're using this as part of their template to do the work that they're doing. But some of the things that I think, that, you know, I'm just thinking about what I've heard from the community because the social equity piece has been really hard for talent for communities of color that I'm involved with that aren't necessarily involved with the Human Rights Commission, that feel like it's, it's a catchphrase and it's, it's the new thing, you know, like, you know, like it used to be teaching tolerance, you know, and then it was embracing diversity and now here we have the social equity, you know. And so, and they just, and there's a lot of criticism about how does that really affect the work the city does? How does that really affect the amount of people of color that you have within your organization, their longevity, you know, all the things that communities are concerned about? And so I don't know how that plays into that, this, but I'm hoping that I see John and Sarah listening, which I really appreciate because this is the kind of thing that I think needs to be able to articulate it to the community on how it affects them and how I believe and I hope that we're doing that job to be inclusive, but I still don't hear it a lot, so I'll just leave it at that. But this is.
Okay, so, this is, yes, Betty?
Thank you.
She went from here to the here.
I know. I have to have eyes to go like that.
That was a full hand raise.
That's right.
No, what did I, what was I wanting to say?
It was yes, right?
No, it wasn't. Have you thought of taking this to all the neighborhood groups? And I always like to look not only for what's good about it, but are there any flaws? And having more people who weren't involved in the organization and weren't involved in working on it originally, ask questions about it may reveal things that you haven't thought of. But I do think it's, neighborhoods are always looking for programs and I think it would be good for that. And then I was also thinking that perhaps next year, it's too late for this year, but next year, you might want to get a discussion group at the National League of Cities Convention, which will be a year from, the program's already set for this fall, obviously, but soon they'll be working on the one for next year. And that might be, they're always looking for ideas too.
National?
National League of Cities, yes.
I guess I, and correct me if I say this wrong, but I, when I listen to you, I'm not thinking that you think you've got perfection here. I, I am thinking that you've come up with a lot of ways to prompt people to have discussions about things that are important, that you hope is going to help you be, provide better services for the people of our community and enrich the conversation and ensure that in that conversation, you're looking at all of the three elements that make up the triple bottom line. And we only use that because that helps us think about those three elements. And so it is without, there is no end to it and there's no, you've done it. It's really a work in progress just to help us improve our expertise and our ability to provide the kind of services we hope the people and community will benefit from. Thank you very, very much.
The other thing I like about this, you don't end up with, you got a 4.7.
That's right.
Doesn't work like that.
Doesn't work like that.
Like the growth management policies that we look at all the time.
Well, I think we, I would disagree with you. I think we work on those all the time.
Really?
Yeah.
I'll talk to you about that later.
Encourage infill, mixed use. I mean, I think we do, you can just go down the list. I think we're working on all those things.
Is this intermission?
No, it's not. We're going, but you can take an intermission anytime you'd like.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. The next work session item is food security, scoping and resource plan. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and as Ethan's getting set up, he's set up. Turn over to you to do your time.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pierce, and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the topic of food security with you. I'm Ethan Nelson and I manage the waste prevention and green building program within PDD. Additionally, I have Mike McCarrow and Alyssa Hansen from PDD here to help with any, answer any land use questions that may arise. And Annie Donahue is our compost specialist in urban agriculture. And then I'd also like to recognize the members of the advisory team and thank them for their time and their support that we're involved with. So there's Sean Bowles and as well, Dan Armstrong. I'm here today to report back to you on a council assignment from February 2009, which was to undertake a scoping and resource plan for the development of a food security plan in conjunction with community partners and report back to council by January 2010. Today's presentation will cover the scoping process, recommendations included in the report, and lastly, a motion for the council's consideration. And so our agenda is over on the left-hand side will go background, process, recommendations, both near-term and long-term. Excuse me. A little bit about the triple bottom line, the proposed council action, then we'll have council questions. So you may be asking yourself, why would a waste prevention staff be working on food security project? Now, as the pictures show, the objective of our compost program is to divert organic waste from the landfill into beneficial uses such as soil amendments for food production. It seemed as natural a fit for our program to take on the project as any, and I had discussed it with our internal sustainability board and was given the green light for this. board and was given the green light for this project. Our first task was identify a project advisory committee. While the group outline above does not represent all of the stakeholders within a working local food system, they do represent the majority of organizations who are involved in local food security discussions. Once the advisory committee was up and running, we needed to clarify what food security is. And our definition we settled on was a strong, sustainable, local and regional food system that ensures access to affordable, nutritious, culturally appropriate, fresh food for all people at all times. It's quite a lot. And so what we really looked at is very aspirational goal and what we really tried to hone down is what's our work program, what's our scope of work. Let's focus to building a working local food system. And so when we talk about a working local food system, we utilize this model to provide clarity on the breadth, diversity and scope of what a working local food system is. And so I kind of want to just briefly walk through some of this stuff. And so we've got food production across the country. There's farms, agriculture, a wide variety of activities. We've had direct markets, which would incorporate both farmers' markets and also community-supported agriculture, among other elements. Food storage, transportation, both at the national corporate scale and a smaller, more regional corporate scale like organically grown company. Food processing, industrial facilities across the country, retailing, supermarkets and local stores, consumer reaction, education, networking, so such things as certification, organic certification, those are some of the elements involved there. Food assistance, our regional local food bank, Food for Land County. Community health, there's been a rise of adult diabetes and also childhood obesity that which can be tied directly to the food choices in our community. Food waste processing, ranging from backyard composting up to energy recovery from organic wastes. And then what is the government's role involved in this, both at the local, state and federal levels? So when you look at that complexity, really what we're looking at is trying to scope out a document that would be on par excellence with a comprehensive plan. And as the committee wrestled with that notion of producing a document that would basically be a roadmap to producing a comprehensive plan, we're looking at, well, probably going to cost around $250,000, take two years in time, and in the end you'd have a plan. And what the committee was really looking at was what are some of the items, that some of the opportunities that we could strategically pursue and that would provide leverage points that to move food security forward and also provide additional information to help fill in a lot of the gaps here. And so it's less of, let's create a plan and really what are some items that we can move forward on that are going to help us move along in these areas. So we utilized the, just in terms of framework for the food security scoping report, we utilized the five recommendations, the elements that were put together in the initial sustainability commission recommendation, which was work with partners, review policies, develop a market analysis plan, identify benefits and barriers, and then determine budget and timeline. And so from that, we pulled together three near term and three long-term recommendations, which I'll go over next. So the first one, the committee agreed that it was important for the city to provide leadership and dedicate resources to support neighborhood-scale urban agriculture activities. For an operational standpoint, it meant sense for our compost program to take this on as it is a cost-effective approach to get people invested in gardening so that they can divert organic waste, both yard and food waste, from the disposal stream and into beneficial use. So as a status update, our, we've dedicated a half of our existing FTE, Annie Donahue, who's been the compost specialist, you know, into working as an urban agricultural coordinator for this next year. And the, one of the main items that's on her work plan right now is creating a best practices guide for the development of community and neighborhood gardens to streamline regulatory processes and also identify what resources available for community members. And that's roughly around $39,000 is the half FTE, so costing of these elements.
What's his name again?
Annie Donahue.
Where's that, Ethan?
That's off of Google.
That's a different place.
Yeah.
Must be in southeast Eugene.
Yeah. So the next item is increasing support for local schools through partnership with Oregon Green Schools and the school garden project. And so roughly we've tried to elevate these activities at outreach and education. So we provide about $15,000 worth of assistance to schools and that's matched one-to-one by Land County for waste prevention and education activities. And then we're also going to be developing and implementing a waste prevention grant program in cooperation with CCG Neighborhoods Program, scheduled for rollout in this next summer and we're estimating around $15,000 for that grant program as well for the neighborhoods. One key element that has been absent from most of the recent food localization discussions has been a targeted assessment of what the supply of and demand for local foods is within the metro area. The committee agreed that completing the food market analysis would be beneficial in providing clarity as to the cost-effective investments to strengthen the local food market. And so as a status update on that, the University of Oregon had received a Economic Development Agency grant and partnered with Land County, U of O and the City of Eugene to conduct a demand analysis and supply analysis for the local food market. And cost of that was, U of O provided around $30,000 in match and each of the partners provided $10,000. And so we got a very good, robust report, about 160 pages of market information and also strategies. And we're, our intent is to provide that as both public and private opportunities for folks to see what's out there. And one of the key elements that came out of that is that a 1% increase in keeping more of our economic activity of local foods produced and consumed within Land County equates to around $12 million boost in local economy. And so it's, it's nice to see that there's a leverage point there. The community, the committee believes that the recommendations from the Climate and Energy Action Plan should align with this scoping and resource plan as well as related city services and planning efforts. And the council has only recently reviewed and approved the goals of the Climate and Energy Action Plan. So it's a little bit too early to see the extent of this work yet. I just wanted to highlight some of the elements that are moving forward. Craig Smith earlier, he and staff in our program have been working on providing a climate masters at home program for residents this next year. Our planning division is incorporating the recommendations from the CAP into the Envision Eugene process. And our public works, community gardens continue to provide subsidized garden plots for, for members. And so all of these are elements that were incorporated on into there. And of course, the PDD's urban agriculture coordinator that I mentioned earlier. And the cost of these are all embedded in the, in the project activities. And so it's just staff working to align these different resource plans to have better capacity. So into the long-term recommendations, community food security assessments, they provide a data baseline on current methods to satisfy household food needs. And while there've been a few different attempts at this in the past, the need remains to complete a comprehensive assessment for our region, our local community. And so we were really lucky to have an intern working with our project, Belinda Juddelman. She was an honors college student at the U of O and she did a gap analysis, conducted and completed a gap analysis as her honors project for, of all of the documents and resource plans that have been accomplished. And so we've got this really good teeing off place to move from if we choose to pursue that. And in terms of scoping, it's around $50,000 for the CPW, the Community Planning Workshop, the University of Oregon, to take on to conduct this type of work. And it would probably take about nine months. I think if city staff and/or a community organization were going to take it on, it would probably be in the range of $75,000 to $100,000 simply because of the, the use of students as interns and whatnot. So the average supply of food in the community, combining both emergency supplies, residents and grocery stores is approximately three days. One aspect of food security the committee wanted to address is the ability for communities to actively respond to food shortages as a result from prolonged recovery from natural disasters. And so once again, we looked at what's the cost of completing a report. And there's one that's out of Watcom County up in Washington that really looks at food disaster access. Roughly $50,000 for the CPW project with help from Oregon Partners for Disaster Resilience to work on that in probably about six to nine months. In lieu of that, I mean, there's no funding associated with these. And our emergency managers, while they recognize, both at Land County and the city, recognize that there's a need out there for this. It's not as a higher priority as much of the other stuff that's on their work plan. So it's an unfunded element at this point. One element, or status update though, is that at the town hall food security meeting in April, Linda Cook had mentioned, had gone through this and mentioned that there was four elements that she was going to add on into emergency planning. And they were add food shortages into exercise programs for emergency management services, incorporate food resiliency into preparedness outreach programs, add a food element as part of the neighborhood mapping program that they were currently being completed, and then also work with partner agencies and organizations to map out food deserts in Land County. So that is moving forward. And now, the moment we've all been waiting for.
Food deserts.
The chickens. So the committee wanted to address regulatory barriers toward increasing the level of food produced within the city limit, which is.
Local chickens?
Well, I know.
Which is, yeah, this is.
Yeah, but it's just that we don't care right now. So we, and so part of this, of our, of our project, the scoping resource plan, Mary, U of O professor, law professor Mary Wood and a team of first students from the Environment and Natural Resource Center put together a white paper on reforming land, local land use laws to increase micro livestock. Their, their model code and their recommendations were very far-reaching and the committee really looked at that and said, okay, that's, that's great information, but we believe to putting forth a recommendation that was revising the land use code to address current interests in urban agriculture and animal rearing for food rather than trying to adopt this white paper. And there's a lot of current interests, as you can tell, and I'll just take you on a little tour of the interest out there. We've got craftsman style chicken coops. We have native enclosures. We have the nouveau. We have the chalet.
Oh my god.
This is my favorite, reuse of a classic car. So waste prevention at its best. And now we've got utilitarian, which is, you know, what you're going to see, you know, nuts and bolts approach. So, so as a status update, oh, and then we've also got, it's raised to the level of raising chickens for dummies. So, so currently, as a status update, our, the Eugene code, this is something the council has discussed before and provided to them, allows for two hens on a residential lot that's under 20,000 square feet. And on May 24th, city council meeting, a lot of residents came and gave testimony. And there's also been letters from the public to both council, mayor and staff as well. And after some analysis on the impact that suspending enforcement on the numbers would have and in response to these public comments and interest, billing improvement services division manager, suspended enforcement of the Eugene code if the complaint is based solely on the number of adult female chickens, so hens. Performance issues such as odor, noise, sanitation and or proximity to adjacent dwellings will still be enforced on if there's a nuisance complaint. And so we don't have chicken police going on out, but if some neighbor complains of the noise or anything else, then we will enforce on those performance standards. So while addressing the chicken, the number of hens does not constitute all of the types of animals that's in, under a micro livestock consideration. Staff believe this to be the most cost-effective solution at the current time. So current suspension of enforcement, $0. If we were to look into revising Eugene code, it's going to run roughly $10,000 to $40,000 and take at least six to nine months. So it's kind of what the cost analysis is there. So lastly, moving on into the triple bottom line, I, from the discussion prior to this work session, I really just took the final document that we had and processed it through all of those prompts and really tried to identify what are the elements. And for a food security plan and accommodating the recommendations or accomplishing the recommendations that are in this project, there are positive effects for environment and social equity, but neutral effects for economic development. And so what I meant by that is that the social equity score is high if implementation emphasis on building community access to healthy, affordable, culturally appropriate foods. If it focuses on boutique products, then it's not going to be there. Environmental scores are high if implementation emphasis on organic or low carbon methods rather than conventional farming applied locally. And then the economic element is marginal. That's based upon the outcomes from the food market and assessment and the analysis there. And so there's, there's strategic, small-scale strategic investments that occur, can occur, but in terms of large-scale investment to really transform it, the market isn't able to respond currently because of global market conditions. So lastly, the two proposed motions that have been presented in the AIS today are, one, to continue suspension of enforcement on the number of adult female fowl allowed on residential lots under 20,000 square feet until a future time revisions of Eugene code provision can be made. Currently, no revision process is scheduled for chapter nine. Or two, initiate a revision to Eugene code provision limited to adjusting the number of adult female fowl allowed and the city council or planning commission can prioritize this revision when reviewing the planning division's annual work plan. And so the city manager's recommendation is for option number one. Questions?
Thank you. So I've got Betty, Mike, George P., Jennifer?
Sure.
George B., Andrea, Alan. Okay, working our way around. Betty, you're first.
Thank you.
Yeah.
She's always first.
Mike's always first. Maybe we should explain to the public this.
Nah.
Competition. No.
It'll just be our fun.
Okay, let's go on. Well, I have some questions first and then some.
It's unexplainable.
What is culturally appropriate food?
Yeah, I noticed that one, too. So I, I followed up when we were working on that definition. I went and I talked with Raquel Wells and to try to get a good understanding. And, and her explanation is that if there's, so if we put it into context of what you determined to be culturally appropriate food for yourself and you go to a different place and it's not available. So for me, it would be, I like peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. And I go to a place where there's no peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, or I can't get access to that. My, that's culturally appropriate. And so it's not only personal preference, but it also embodies culturally or ethnic foods that are part of your identity. And so if you are Hispanic and you do not have access to Hispanic Latin foods, then it's, then there's not culturally appropriate foods. It's my understanding, it's the way that we've kind of.
It doesn't seem to go with food security to me, but I know, I see what you mean now. Like I grew up in the South and I like okra and you can't always get that here.
There's a reason.
Don't talk about my culture. Okay, I'm really glad to hear you're using student work. I think, I think that the more we do that, the better, that we need to take advantage of being, of the universities. Being, being here also, it goes along with better city/university relationships, which is certainly a worthwhile goal. I think that you're partly talking about in case of disaster and that's good, but, but food security has a lot more than that. And it's environmentally, it's closely connected to environmental goals, sustainability. And eating local is, has so many benefits for health and, and for carbon reduction and all sorts of things. So I think that is really important. When we get to the eggs, I wonder if we're going to regulate if people decide to sell them. I mean, I suppose the chickens are for eggs. Are we going to allow slaughterhouses on private lots?
Slaughter of eggs?
Well, goats. And what kind of health regulation? There are some dangers from eggs that aren't, if they do share them with neighbors or sell them, there are some dangers. And also are we hurting the farmers who are selling eggs if we allow this expansion of chickens, of the number? And I see, that's what we're getting to soon, I think, is that motion. I see all kinds of neighbor disputes coming up. If we, if we say we're not enforcing a law, then that means you could have 30 chickens if you want. If there's no enforcement, I can imagine people getting a whole flock of hens. And that may be a problem with, as one constituent pointed out to me, chicken feed, which is scattered around, can attract rodents. And the manure, if you get very much of it, doesn't smell good and it attracts flies. And how do you make sure, nobody can tell the sex of chickens when they're little. So how do you make sure that you're not going to end up with some roosters? And then there's a big complaint thing and a big problem of getting, of getting rid of those. What do you do with them then? Kill them on sight or what? I just see a lot of problems with the motion that we have before us. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for all the hard work. There's a good deal of work by a lot of people.
for a long time, that in the case of an emergency, we have about a three-day supply of food in our valley. That could be a real problem. And I'm happy that we're thinking about this in a way that says, what do we do to enhance our security? I think that's great. I'm one of the, I'm a, I'm a very proud backyard farmer and have turned under about half of my backyard to grow stuff. And I think that's a fantastic activity. That's just my personal opinion. I'd like to see us doing more of that in our community. I think for a bunch of reasons, it's a good idea. I also think that access to community gardens, as you mentioned, and neighborhood gardens is a, is a real value for a lot of people. It's my understanding that we, I had some complaints that we doubled the fee for that this year. Do I have that right?
I'd have to check, I don't remember what.
I had a number of complaints about the increase in fee to folks to participate in community gardens, and I really think that that's a problem that we should address. And I'd like to see us expanding access to community garden space and lowering the cost, if anything, and making it something people can, can participate in more freely, especially as it relates to food security. I didn't hear anything in the planning with regard to a couple of the points that you showed in the first part of this slide, that I actually think are, that are of high concern to me. Issues around transportation and storage of food are of great concern to me, and I look at it not just from a food security standpoint, but I think we have a real economic opportunity in our area to enhance our economy with both doing more to enhance infrastructure for food, transportation, storage, and processing. So I would like to have a richer discussion around those issues for both the sake of security and economic development. And then lastly, with regard to the motion specifically, I, I think I would probably support the first one, just to keep the suspension in place and talk about it some more later, just so we can, you know, keep the issue alive for a while, because it's kind of fun.
Hey, George Bowling?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that I think that this, if we get to it, the motion is, I think should have been a whole separate work session on its own. Obviously, we're not going to have enough time to discuss it. So I would rather have seen it come up as a discussion on its own. Having been raised on a farm by depression-era parents, I know what you do with chickens. I raised them all my, all my younger life. There are a number of health issues that are, that Betty raised that I agree 100% with. You know, how do we know what's going to happen with those eggs that the neighbors are going to share? I mean, you know, we candel our eggs just to make sure that there wasn't anything going on inside. So there are, you know, not only do the food attract rodents, but, you know, other vermin like Mike's favorite pet, the nutrients. So we, you know, we have a lot of issues to address on that. I had a question about the culturally appropriate food also. I understand the definition, but folks, when you're hungry, you're hungry. You know, I can understand religious and medical needs, but, you know, being raised by an Italian mother, if I didn't have Italian food, it didn't hurt my feelings, I was hungry, I put something on my face to feed it. So I'm a little, I just kind of got disconnected on that part. And $10,000 to $40,000 to do a code change? I don't understand. Can you give me an explanation on that? Why it's going to cost that much?
Yeah.
Hi, Alyssa Hansen. Alyssa Hansen with the Planning Commission. I was expecting that question, because I realize it does sound like an outrageous number at first blush. Most of that money is a result of a state requirement that we actually mail notice to all affected property owners that we're changing a regulation on their property. And because this would probably impact most residential lots, it's a lot of pieces of mail that we would have to send out. And so that ends up being the bulk of that, that cost that was mentioned. There's also other mailing costs. We'd have to mail for the Planning Commission public hearing and for the city council public hearing. Both of those are part of the formal adoption process. And then there'd be whatever public involvement process to address all the issues that you're raising. So that is, there would probably be some costs involved with that as well. That being said, I think one of the reasons that the recommendation is for number one is because if we incorporate this into another code amendment process, we'd already be doing some of those notices. And so that would be a cost savings right there.
When would that be happening?
One of the things that we are talking about is incorporating food security aspects of it into the Envision Eugene process. We will likely be sending notice to all of, you know, all property owners within the urban growth boundary already for that process, so we could dovetail this.
But when would that?
February 2011.
When would that be that we could actually take action on this code change?
Well, you'll be talking, under that one, I'm going to defer that to city manager. I do know that on October 13th, you will be talking about Envision Eugene at your entire work session, and I believe timeline is one of the topics.
All right. Well, that explains the price tag on that. I have a third option, but I think if I mentioned the third option, my wife wouldn't let me back in the house. We have differing opinions about chickens. As far as I'm concerned, you know, if we're going to do something about allowing people to have chickens, we should do it right and just go ahead and do a code change. You know, in the meantime, are we monitoring how many complaints that we receive from people about, well, my neighbor's got 15 chickens and they're running wild, is there any way of tracking that in any way? I know we're not enforcing it, but I'm sure we're going to still get complaints about
Mike McCarrow with Building Permit Services Division. And we average about six to eight complaints about chickens every year, and I believe all of those are relating to noise from roosters, impacts from those.
Six to eight a year?
Right.
Okay, all right. All right, yeah. I just feel that we need a definite, maximum number of chickens and also a date certain as, so we can close this issue once and for all.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I would agree with George. We, I mean, I'm willing to double the number from two to four, maybe even five, but we need to put a cap on it because it just screams abuse. And if we're not going to enforce it, I think we're abdicating our responsibility for sustaining some level of dependability in this community. And I also object to the fact that the burden then falls to the neighbor to be the bad guy, to complain about the odor and the food storage. And that's just been a problem with other issues in Ward 6, and I just don't want to add it to this issue as well. And like Betty said, I'm not, I'm not seeing the nexus between food security and allowing chicken for our community and allowing people to grow chickens, because I think they're supposed to be, to be growing them for themselves, the eggs. And if they do start selling, I believe there's more liability there for E. coli and salmonella and whatever else is going on around there. So I'm just concerned about that liability. And I, and I do, I am disappointed that this was put in with this work session, because there are people following this issue. And if you were to just go online and look at our work session topic today, it feeds security scoping, you wouldn't think this was about chickens. And so when I saw that the motion was about chickens, I felt, I don't want to use the word deceptive, because I don't think that anybody sets out to be deceptive, but it's very misleading. And I think a lot of people got left out of the discussion that should have been at the table.
So you don't want to cry foul?
Oh, we're going to have to stop.
Absolutely. George Brown?
God bless America.
Thank you. So who is it exactly that investigates the complaints? It's someone from the planning. And it's mostly been roosters. And so then what do you do? You just tell them you got to get rid of the roosters and they comply? Okay. Especially at complaints, it doesn't seem so bad. I mean, I, I think I could support number one for today. I don't really see too much of a problem with it. I would like to see the Lane County Local Food Market Analysis. I'd like to get a copy. We, I suppose, is it, is it online?
Yeah, and I can provide a copy here at the council offices for you.
That'd be great. I'd appreciate that. And I'd also like a copy if, if wanted, I mean, if there is one available of Belinda.
Juddelman's?
Yeah, Juddelman, the security assessment gap analysis.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that. Actually, the size of the email, it might come in separate emails, because they're big documents.
You can do that. George, you got anything else?
I think that's all. Thanks.
Okay. So now Andrea?
I think John wanted to weigh in on something, Mayor.
Okay.
I was just going to help clarify a little bit about why now versus some other time. And it wasn't to intend to be deceptive or to stifle public conversation, there will still need to be public conversation. Right now, we are not enforcing, proactively enforcing number of chickens out there. So that's where we are right now. What this would do is sort of recognize that and say, okay, we're going to continue to do that until the time we come back and actually have revision to the ordinance, which would include all of the appropriate public conversation along with that. And bring that back in a, we would suggest is a more efficient manner, just from a purely cost standpoint. So that's why this is in here. Chickens is, you know, backyard gardening is a part of the larger food security discussion along with community gardens and all of these kinds of things. So I do think there is a nexus with chickens and food security. But, so this really just says, continue the current practice. We will put it together as a, an ordinance discussion as we kind of move into that discussion. Envision Eugene might be an appropriate time to have some of those discussions, as far as being able to distribute that out to the whole community. So that's what really this is all about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, good work, appreciate the work you've brought forward. I'm, it's interesting to hear people's perspectives. I have a horse in my neighborhood right now, and so I spoke to somebody in code enforcement and they went through the litany of everything we can have if you have the space. And so it's really interesting when I hear comments about concerns. Granted, there's six acres where this horse is and it's not really impacting anybody, but it just kind of makes me think about, you know, the fact that we can have animals within the city if you have the space. The other thing that kind of was, that you mentioned that I, kind of resonates with me is your issue around identifying food deserts. And I know that's a term that's used, either food swamps or food deserts is kind of the same thing where people don't have access to good food. And I'm wondering if, if in this analysis, if there's going to be an opportunity to say, is there like a national standard of what you, if you want your community to be healthy, is there a standard of how close you should have your freshest, your fresh food source be? Like within a mile, two miles, three miles? Because I know that in our neighborhoods, there really isn't that many places to eat. I mean, there's not places to sit down and eat, there's not places to buy fresh fruit and vegetables or fresh meat. And it's, there's like, it's like a four-mile radius either, you know, at either end of the spectrum. So it'd be interesting to see this. And some of the work of around this kind of issue around access to food has been done in a grant through HPRN. And I would look, would hope that your students would look at that around obesity issues in the Trinson neighborhood. There's a lot of good work was done there, so I'd encourage you to look up that study.
Okay. Alan?
So I know a lot of people worked on this. It's a very good document and great work. And I assume it was coincidence that when you were mentioning all those folks, you had pictures of nuts up there. That was just coincidence.
So locally grown fieldwork?
Locally grown, okay. Not a Google shot. I, too, vegetable garden have forever. I thought the two interesting points that you made were that 1% increase in local food production, I suspect, increases our local activity by $12 million a year.
That was one of the outcomes in the, that was put into the market analysis. And it's, to clarify, it's produced and consumed locally. So it keeps those dollars from leakage.
Right, right, right. And what percentage of our food is local now?
Produced and consumed is around 5%.
5%, okay. And then the other one that I thought was interesting and kind of a little scary was that three days of food availability with our existing stores and storages, in the case of a natural disaster, that's not very long at all. What are we doing to deal with that issue?
What are we doing in terms of the community, city?
Increasing that amount of time.
Well, it, the response that when we've talked with the emergency managers is that when there's a disaster, then you look at pulling external resources. And so that three-day period of time runs through all of the food that's available within, but by that time of, when you're into recovery, you're out of response and you're into recovery, you're generally bringing in resources from outside the impacted area. And so the, you know, most, most disasters, you're going to be able to bring food from outside up in Portland or Bend or other areas. And so it's just in those prolonged disasters like a Katrina or Cascadia Subjection Zone, those types of, pretty catastrophic.
Took a lot longer, three days to get food into Katrina, but into New Orleans. I would like to hear more about what we're doing to extend that. On the chicken things, we have, we can't have roosters, so that's enforced, right?
Yes.
And so if we don't regulate on the number of chickens, we're still regulating on noise and odor?
Yes.
So how does that process work? So if someone has 20 chickens, we don't really care if they're not noisy and they don't create odor, but if they do, what happens?
If somebody has one chicken or 20 chickens and the neighbor or someone complains because of the noise, the proximity to the dwelling, the adjacent dwellings, the sanitation issue, if there's harborage for rodents, any of those issues, our code enforcement staff will go on out, work with complainants, look at the site, and they can complain anonymously through our online and phone systems, and be able to go on out and determine what the performance issue is. And so if somebody, like I said, one chicken or 20 chickens, it comes down to a performance issue. And in the past, we've come out and if somebody has three chickens, then you say, okay, you're one chicken above what we have as code, because that's a numbers issue. And now what we're saying is we're suspending that element and we're going on out and still looking at the performance issue, the underlying performance issue. That has not changed nor will it. So we will continue to enforce our code.
What's the remedy? So if somebody has 20 chickens and it's really stinky and it's really noisy, we tell them to get rid of chickens?
Yes.
Until they get down to what threshold?
They comply with performance.